At 6:10, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we only have really two things on the agenda, but I am turning this over right away to Tom Mooney from Shipman &amp; Bigwin, who is going to walk us through some things that we have in front of us. Do we have something we can email Cody?
We would have.
Oh, okay. You already sent it to him?
Yes.
Great. Okay, Cody, apparently you have some materials. I don't know if you can access them or not, it's no big deal.
I'll just hang you up and then in one second.
Okay, great. All right.
Well, I'll say.
Go ahead. Turning it over to you, Tom.
Well, good evening, everyone, and it's nice to meet you in person. Some of us have been on Zoom over the last year and others are... How long have you been on the board?
Oh, I'm new. I've just since November, well, since we were sworn in.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
But we've been doing work on Zoom, you know, for the last two years, and it's really kind of funny. I meet people, I always tell them, Joe, I had no idea he was some fellow mine. But finally, we're here in person, and what I'd like to do is talk with you about your rights and responsibilities as board members. I've been representing school districts for 45 years, but you wouldn't know to look at me because I enjoy it so much, it keeps me young. And so over those years, I've gotten to see effective boards and boards that aren't so effective. And so I am here to largely focus on legal issues, because that is my job as a lawyer. But I have, over the years, gotten less shy about offering my opinion on what works, you know, in terms of effective boards and shit. But I do want to start, in all modesty, the last thing I was elected to was in eighth grade. And you are the elected officials here, so what I think about how you should do your job is just information. You have to decide for yourself how to do your job within a legal framework that we'll be discussing. And I'll just start, and I've provided this information to dozens of boards over the last couple of years. And I always ask an opening question, which is, did you go to middle school? And so far, everybody at every single one of these meetings has admitted to going to middle school. And the reason I ask is then, so you all know what three branches of government are. And the threshold question is, where are you as members of the Board of Education? What branch of government are you?
They didn't answer that.
Cody will know.
Civic plus.
Did Cody hear us? Cody, you want to answer?
The question is, what?
What branch of government?
We now you to the federal government, what branch are we?
Yes.
Well, we expelled that person judicially, right?
Uh, we're the Supreme Court.
I was gonna say executive.
So anyway, I heard Joe mention that an expulsion proceeding, and so you do have judicial responsibilities. We're gonna talk more about that because board members can get themselves in trouble by stepping outside of their role as a judge and into a community discussion about a controversial issue. But that's one. So so far, you're at 100 here.
Well, we're policymakers.
You're so.
It's a trick question. We're all three. We have elements of all three.
That's what I was just gonna say, we're policymakers.
Well, actually, I would disagree. You mentioned current policy, and that is the legislative function. And in fact, that's the primary responsibility of a Board of Education, is the policymaking body. What does Congress do? They pass laws and they adopt a budget. What do you do?
Pass laws.
They pass policies and adopt a budget.
Right.
And on occasion are called in to exercise your judicial responsibilities. But the statute is very clear, and the statute being 10-151, is that the superintendent is, quote, "the chief executive officer of the Board of Education." So one of the hardest things for board members to incorporate into their thinking is the distinction between operational issues, which are the responsibility of the administration, and policy issues that are the responsibility of the Board of Education. Where that line is drawn is difficult, and I've been doing this a long time, and I can't tell you in all black and white. This is where you draw the line. You have to, I think the key there, and we're gonna talk through scenarios about common things that come up, and we'll talk about how you think you should do your job. But I think the key thing with regard to that distinction between an operational concern that's the superintendent's responsibility and policy concerns that are the board's responsibility is communication. You just need to understand each other in terms of what your expectations are and what the superintendent's expectations are. But what I have in these little packets here are three documents. One is scenarios for discussion, and that's gonna be the primary focus. So we talk with each other about how the board operates. But then I have questions and answers on the Freedom of Information Act. Increasingly, the Freedom of Information Act is used by people who don't like what you're doing to cause trouble. And so we're gonna talk some about emails and how boards can get themselves in trouble. And in fact, the third document, Legal Rights and Responsibilities, that's really more than inventory. But the third and the fourth pages are an explanation of the problems that arise when you are on email as a board member. But let's just jump right in, if you don't mind. And scenario one is that The Greenwich Time published a front page story about a teacher employed at Greenwich High School who was arrested for running a math lab. The article identifies that, this is a hypothetical.
Right.
It's not, I'm trying to break the news, right? The article identifies the teacher by name and school. Parents from that school come to the next board meeting and during public comment, several of them address the board to express concern that this teacher must be fired immediately. A fourth parent comes up to speak and attacks the board for sitting there like bumps on a log and asks the board members what they're gonna do about this bad teacher. Should the board members during public comment sit there like bumps on a log?
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's your clear understanding, and why is that?
We're not, we're not HR. We couldn't do anything about it if we wanted to.
It's public comment, it's not, it's not a hearing, we don't respond, it's one of our policies.
Well, and that's great, so we don't have to spend a lot of time on that. But it actually, there are practical and legal issues for your policy. The practical issue is that you're gonna hear one side of the story. And I can tell already that you're an empathetic bunch, and you want to help. And so, you know, if somebody tells us that story, it's gonna tug at you a little bit. But you're only hearing half of the story, so to engage in a discussion at that point would be premature and possibly prejudicial because you may say, oh, you know, and then there's a concession or an admission by a board member about something without all the facts. The legal issue is that your responsibility as a board is to stay within your agenda. And the agenda specifies what business you'll be conducting. And if someone comes into a board meeting on public comment with a very interesting issue that you then engage in a discussion, that would be violation of the Freedom of Information law because the law defines a meeting as discussion or action on an item within your jurisdiction, and you have to notice that through your agenda. So that's easy.
Please.
Please.
That's good, that's good. Go ahead.
Well, so what if you are worried as a board member that, that somebody that, that might have was in danger because of this?
Right?
Scenario.
Oh, yes, then you want that to super agenda.
Is that?
Yeah. So but.
So if you still were sorry, I'm sitting.
Sorry, what's up, Cody? Sorry.
Is it, so it's illegal to talk about anything that's not on the, on the agenda? And you can, are you allowed to make amendments to the agenda at the meeting?
You are if it's a regular meeting. By two-thirds vote, the board can add an item to the agenda and discuss it, but only at a regular meeting.
So not like a special meeting, which a lot of them have been lately, Cody, because of, because of the hybrid issue, but generally at a regular meeting you could.
Yes.
If someone shares their views on a subject unrelated to anything on the agenda, just like gets on the mic and offers some random thought, that is breaking the law?
You'll have to clarify the circumstance, right? It's somebody being a board member?
Yeah, sorry, board member, yeah.
And, well, you know, there, I don't want to be overly formalistic about this. For example, sometimes the agenda item is board member comments or new items for the agenda where there's opportunity for discussing things. But when you engage in a formal discussion of a particular item, it should be on the agenda.
And I think illegal is probably the wrong word, improper.
It's just foible, maybe it's the.
No, no, or just improper, I don't, you know, like, I think we.
No, well, my concern I raised was if the board engages in a discussion that's not on the agenda, then that's in violation of the Freedom of Information law because your meeting should be posted and the agenda should fairly apprise the public that a business to be transacted. And in that context, business includes discussion because you act as a deliberative body, and so you make your decisions, even if you don't vote then and there, through discussion. Or you have.
Oh, but so what if you were concerned as a board member that there were children in a class with this fictitious teacher that could have been in a, in a dangerous position? Are we not also, I don't know if it's required, to, you know, be assured that the children in this fictitious situation would be safe?
Oh, absolutely. You have an important oversight role. But that would be a superintendent responsibility, and it's particularly important to leave that responsibility to the superintendent because of your judicial responsibility later. So you're absolutely, now, because you could be called upon to serve as a judge when this guy gets fired, you should leave the investigation and discussion of the particular facts to the superintendent. And sometimes there's tension because you obviously are concerned and want to know what's, what's going on, this is really upsetting. And the superintendent should, is perfectly free to say, I'm handling it, the person's on leave, no children are at risk, but I can't get into the details. Because, I mean, what the natural question in your head is, did he do it? But you can't get into that until the appropriate time. And although it's early in our discussion, this is one of the things I always warn people about because this is over 40 years ago, but I still am a little bit traumatized because the circumstance involved the non-renewal of the high school principal. And the high school principal, who was being non-renewed, had a right to a hearing, and he invited 400 of his closest friends to the high school auditorium for his hearing. And so now the board's up on the stage in front of 400 people, and the first thing it's loaded with was called board members to the stand and said, isn't it true that you told Sally at the Stop &amp; Shop that you're gonna get rid of my client? And now you can well imagine that the status of the high school principal is a matter of great public interest. And you can well imagine that, in fact, that board member had been talking to Sally at the Stop &amp; Shop about getting rid of the principal. And then they put Sally on the stand, and then they put a couple other board members on the stand, yeah, I might have been talking about it. And so in front of 400 people, I just watched the ability of the board to perform its judicial responsibility. What is a fundamental indicator of due process? Notice, chance to respond, impartial decision maker. That's an essential element of due process. So this board had shown itself not to be impartial by getting involved. So the warning here is that although people are, one challenge you have as board members is to train the public to understand your role versus the superintendent's role. And so board member, I'm sorry, members of the community, they're gonna be in a controversial situation. They're gonna say, well, you're a member of the board, so, you know, help me out here, what's going on? And they just, and that's perfectly innocent. They, they don't understand the separation of responsibilities. So when there's a controversial issue involving a teacher or an administrator, if there's any chance that that could come to you ultimately in judgment, you have to just say, well, I can't really talk about that. You know, I'm a board member, I may or may not get involved at some point, but that's not my job. If you have a question, you should talk with the superintendent.
So on the off chance that we could be on a jury in a legal situation?
Of a jury?
Like, I mean, this.
In this situation?
Yeah, like, we wouldn't be.
Oh, here's how it works.
We would fail a teacher.
No, you don't, but you do fire teachers. And in fact, interestingly.
I didn't know we could fire teachers.
Well, there's some. Some preconditions. I'm sorry, Cody, what did you say?
I'm just, how many times has a teacher been fired in the last five years?
I've got any ideas?
Actually, I'll.
We wouldn't know what. But I would say is that.
Well, I was involved in a seven-day public hearing here, it was about four years ago.
One of the new teachers.
Yes, correct. And then that came back to the full board, being the quasi-judicial responsibilities. But teacher, superintendents, here's how it works. The board hires teachers. Teachers mean anybody in a certified position up to the level of superintendent. Boards delegate by statute that responsibility to the superintendent. And where along that continuum, I don't know what your rule here is, if you hire everyone?
She does.
Okay, well then, and that's a delegation perfectly appropriate. But the board can't hire a teacher except upon the recommendation of the superintendent, and the superintendent can't fire a teacher except upon the vote of the board. So the only way a teacher would ever be dismissed, now, Cody made a very good point, I don't want to ignore it. And that is, most of these cases are resolved through negotiation and settlement and resignation. So it is the rare circumstance that you actually have a formal hearing. But you never know that until it's over, and so that's why this is such an important line to draw, that the personnel issues are the superintendent's responsibility, and you may or may not be called into the situation. Yes, please.
So the other.
I'm sorry.
But remember, we almost added to the agenda, Karen, like, that's why we're looking at it, because if there were anyone that was going to be fired, it was, would have been at the last meeting, and then we realized that that was something to discuss with Tony.
Right.
Yeah.
So I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
So going back to Laura's original question on not being able to discuss items that are not on the agenda and being addressed. So, for example, let's say Dr. Jones, in her comments, addresses a couple of issues, and in her superintendent report.
Yes.
Ultimately responds in a way to kind of address some of the issues that are presented by public comment. And we engage, and then we have questions for Tony based upon her public, based upon her superintendent report that relate to those comments.
Yes.
That's acceptable.
That, absolutely, that's fine.
Second question, and was the difference between the regular meeting and the special meeting?
Yes.
We continue to have special meetings simply because they're due, they're both in a room, Zoom, a hybrid setting? That makes it a special meeting?
No, I can explain.
Okay.
At the beginning of the year, public agencies filed with the town clerk their schedule of regular meetings. And though, by statutory definition, those meetings are regular meetings. And even if you have to change the date, that turns the regular meeting into a special meeting. And the premise is that the public is deeply interested in your work, and so they know what your regular meetings are, and they know that you could add things to the agenda at a regular meeting, so they should attend all your regular meetings. Special meetings are for special purposes, you can't add to the agenda, and then the public can decide whether or not to come to the special meeting.
So why are all our meetings have been special meetings?
But if we've changed the location?
Changed the location because of the whole central.
Does that count as school thing?
Yeah, change of time, date, location.
Because when they were originally noticed?
Does all of that make, converse it into a special meeting?
Yes.
Because we don't post them, because when we filed our statement, like, January 31st, it listed every.
Costco, Old Greenwich Parkway, we hadn't really noticed all those.
So anytime we come up in the round, in the order, and we're actually at Central Middle School, because we didn't change it, that's a regular meeting.
Correct.
Yes.
It's annoying.
Yeah, it really is, because.
It is annoying, yeah. Yeah.
It doesn't give us the freedom to actually, if a particular item is being talked about repeatedly in public comment, that it would be helpful to maybe diffuse the situation because comments from us would in fact take, you know, people, as we heard today, sometimes have spirited conversation, spirited comments. And it would help to diffuse the situation sometimes if you could actually not engage in a conversation, but have a more discuss it, but if we're continuously in the special meeting concept, we can never make the amendment to have that conversation.
Yeah, that is the single biggest difference between a special and a regular. Yes?
So just sort of to tab on to what I'm saying, so, because I knew you said part of the reason that we don't respond is if we were, for instance, if we were ever called to, if there was ever any trial, didn't go to negotiations, we could be called as witness, or we could be in the judicial role in the situation. But I was gonna say, is it also fair, not fair, is it also fair to say that if somebody addressed something in public, discussed something in public comment, that is possibly questioned outside of our jurisdiction? It's not something that the superintendent has had the opportunity to look into, as in that, as you mentioned, it's one side.
Right.
And we address it, does that then mean that we could then be called upon, you know, whatever we said is now part of our public record, it could be used in that case to?
I don't want to overstate the concerns, but.
So it's not just, my point is, we're not, it's not just us being judicial, is that we could then change the situation should there be?
Oh, absolutely. If now, and there's a public comment without the full story, a board member hypothetically would say, that's terrible, we never should have done that. Then as the case goes to litigation, well, the board agreed that this was not the proper procedure, you know. So that, there is a danger, again, I don't want to overstate it, but there is a danger of admissions arising out of that conversation without the full story that would then be used against the board. Are you ready for scenario two?
Two quick questions, sorry, I held these back. The non-agenda items, public comments, if they are off our agenda items, do we have the authority to ask them to stop speaking? Not saying what is a wrong thing to do.
Yeah.
But do we have the authority to say, you're off agenda item, can you please stop talking off microphone goes?
Are you not?
Your enthusiasm is.
Not saying, not saying advisable to do or not, do we have the authority to do this question?
Yeah, let's just start at the basic premise, there's no legal duty, although there's a bill pending in the legislature. But right now, and for my entire career, there's been no legal duty to have public comment. And so you have the ability to create the forum that you see most appropriate. Some boards have public comment on agenda items. Some, it's implicit that they can't, like, kind of talk about the war in Ukraine. I mean, you know, it should, it's implicit that it's related to the board operation. But sometimes boards say, the beginning of the meeting is to, your chair, your comment matters on our agenda because we value your input. And some boards have no further opportunity for public comment. Some board member, some boards have public comment at the end of the meeting where it's more of a free-for-all, they can raise any board-related issue. Are those a policy judgment?
Greenwich used to do that, by the way.
Our policy, yeah, we provide for that, our policy is, it's open. It provides no limitation on the agenda, whether it's agenda or not agenda. It's three minutes, period.
And I would say that's most typical.
Yeah.
That it's just.
On whatever.
So even though, according to our.
Our policies do not require that public comments be on agenda items.
The woman who does poetry and the nursery rhymes and stories, she could just go ahead and do that.
She gets her three minutes.
She gets her three minutes. Unless you change the policy, which is within our control, but that would be a need.
So it's policy, yes, we know our policies. Number two, a board member decides to go off agenda item, talking about something that was not on the agenda.
Right.
The chair and other board members do have the authority to ask that board member to please get on topic.
Yes, and let me explain how.
Please, thank you.
That's an issue parliamentary procedure. And so in the first instance, the chair would say, you're out of order, you're off the agenda. And, but, you know, there's a procedure under Robert's rules to deal with these issues. And I like to present this as a collaborative effort. Somebody in, oh, a public comment, for example, is swearing.
Yeah.
And Kathleen may or may not, like, you know, jump in and say, you're out of order. So any board member, when there's a violation of parliamentary procedure, can say, point of order. And that brings the issue to the chair's attention, point of order, the gentleman's out of order, you know, because although the First Amendment protects the content of speech, it doesn't, you can regulate the manner of speech. So you're helping the chair to say, point of order, when these issues arise. But sometimes it's not all so friendly, and the chair rules against someone, and.
And now all of a sudden, Chris Rock.
And so the member who believes that parliamentary procedure was not followed in stopping that person from talking says, point of order. The chair rules on whether that person has the right to speak or not. Chair, and this hypothetical, says, person doesn't have the right to speak, you're done, you're out of order. Point of order, and then if someone else says, I appeal, under Robert's rule, then the decision comes off the chair, and now the board votes on whether that person's out of order. So there is an orderly procedure. And just since we're on parliamentary procedure, an interesting observation is that you're, you know, it's been a tough meeting, you were on the losing end of a vote, it happens, and, and you're disappointed. And you're driving home, oh my goodness, there was no second to that motion, that vote was illegal, right? And that's not true. Because parliamentary procedure is a means to an end, and it's to get through a meeting in an orderly fashion. Issues of parliamentary procedure that are not raised in the moment are waived.
Ah, interesting.
Right, so, so that's.
The end result is the end result.
Right, right, and you got there. So if you do have concerns about parliamentary procedure, you should raise them, them and their, point of order, and then it will be resolved. I'll pause there. Any questions about any of that?
The second is not needed for a vote?
Yes, it is.
No, it is.
If you didn't realize it till after, until after the call of vote, it being, being built for.
You have all sorts of points of order, including like.
No, you're just talking about.
Shouldn't we convene the meeting? You know, people just start talking, and, oh, oh, point of order, we need to convene the meeting, or we need to adjourn the meeting, like that. So how about scenario two? You're ready for, you're doing great so far.
The hard bit then.
So three members of the Board of Education post a letter on Facebook addressed to the Greenwich Public Schools community. In the post, board members talk about the upcoming budget, and they urge people to write to members of the Board BET to encourage them to support the budget. The board, these three board members identify themselves on Facebook as members of the Greenwich Board Ed. Other board members see the post and are mad that the three board members did not let them know about the post in advance. Did these three board members do anything wrong?
Yes and no.
Yes, well, that's.
Well, no, yes, because they're, it sounds like they're addressing themselves as members of the Board of Education without stipulating that they're not, that they're speaking as individuals, that they, it seems as though it is a missive from the Board of Education and that the Board of Education is speaking as opposed to these three individuals.
Right, that's an excellent point.
So it's like, they can stipulate that they're members of the board, but they're speaking as individuals.
So, so actually, there are three alternatives. Signed, if you're members of the board, don't disclose you're a member of the board, or signed as a member of the board but not speaking for the board. Given your comment, I'm sure you would say that's the, the third alternative is the best. That they should, if they identify themselves as.
I didn't say it's the best, I just said if they've identified themselves as board members, if they step in. Well, I would say that in generally in this community, most people know the names of members of the Board of Education. of the Board of Education, so even if they didn't sign, some of them do, so even if they didn't sign, say that they were members of the board, people might assume that they, they came from the board, but, you know, the alternative is to say, you're speaking on behalf of your, your son as an individual.
I, well, okay, I won't ascribe that to you, but I say, I think that's the best answer because there could be a claim or a concern, these are not legal issues, but there could be a concern that, uh, here we are, I have this message out there, and the person's a member of the board, they have an interest in this and they didn't disclose it, but if you just say members of the board, um, then that does suggest that those three members are speaking for the board, which they are not. So should the three board members have conferred with the other board members before, uh, uh, joining in the post?
No, cause they're not in a meeting.
They're not in a meeting, correct.
You're on top of it, so tell me more, why, why is that a meeting?
Because they're having a discussion about business that's not a posted meeting, so it would be considered more of a, if you're up, cause you've got quorum then at that point, presumably.
Well, as soon as you communicate among quorum, yeah, um, so I, I don't need to believe this, apparently this is, uh, well understood, but, um, I'll just emphasize that, um, discussion among the quorum of the board away from the board table on matters within the board's jurisdiction is a violation of the Freedom of Information law, and if I could direct your attention to this, this document.
Cody, we're looking at the.
The legal rights and responsibilities, and the third page, um, provides the, um, uh, statutory language. And, and the, the title of this is caution on board member communication by email, because this is one of the most common problems now, when a board member sends an email out to the board and there's a reply all, then is that, uh, a discussion because of, of a meeting that needs to be posted, is any communication, and I'm in the middle of the page, any communication via to a quorum of a multi-membered public agency, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment? Then the critical phrase is to discuss or add upon. Sometimes board members think, well, we didn't take a vote, everything's fine, and it's not, um, because, um, the statute defines a meeting as a discussion, and I, I had a case in Darien. Um, now, you, you're a sophisticated bunch, so you know that I've lost my fair share of cases, some of these boards think I never lose a case, but I, I understand you're more sophisticated, so here's the situation in Darien. A board member was upset about how her son was treated. Uh, this was all at a public hearing, you know, so I'm not, if you're inclined to have this, and, um, so, uh, she writes to the board chair, she's upset. So with the advice of counsel, the board chair writes back, now, the board member had copied all. Board chair writes back, and it keeps everyone else in the loop, right? I mean, you know, she, otherwise, how would the board members know that there was even a response? So board, uh, chair writes back, and, um, she writes back, no, you're wrong, and someone claimed that that was an illegal meeting, uh, of the Board of Education, and, um, my argument was, no, it wasn't. Uh, it was just, uh, two people exchanging information and the others were just watching.
You lost.
Yeah.
It's an L of y'all.
It was, it was. Uh, uh, so it just is, uh, just, it's an illustration of how rigorous the commission will enforce this notion that a quorum of the board shouldn't be, uh, discussing, um, matters within the board's jurisdiction away from the board table. Now, you might say, and in this, um, discussion here, I, I refer, in fact, twenty years ago, the Freedom of Information Commission writing an email that's first coming out, tried to provide guidance on what is or is not a discussion, you know, to help public agencies stay out of trouble, and they dithered for two years, here in Abbott, uh, public comment and this and that, and then they finally just gave up. They were going to issue a declaratory ruling on what it is to be a discussion, and they said, nope, can't do it, uh, we're, uh, just, uh, we're gonna have to decide these matters on a case-by-case basis, and that's what has been happening, and my case was one of those cases.
But like, for example, cause I know I've discussed it with some other board members, Kathleen, when we get a board amendment, uh, an email that comes to the entire board, she acknowledges receipt on behalf of the board, like, thank you for reaching out.
Right.
But that's not problematic, or if somebody's, you know, what's the, you know, that's not creating a meeting, if it's just one, but if the person then writes back, that's when you start having problems, if there's a.
Ex- writes back to everybody.
Yeah.
Now, you, any board member could write back to Kathleen and say, could you, or call it, you know, the phone still works, but.
Yeah.
Um, uh, could, you know, but as soon as a quorum of the board is involved in the communication, the second exchange of information potentially is the discussion. And since we're on the subject, um, do y'all have cell phones? Uh, do you ever text involving, uh, board business? The first part of this document, um, just, uh, I share, what is a public record? And a public record is any recorded information relating to the conduct of the public's business by a member of a public agency. Now, how many public agencies are there in this room right now?
One.
One. Oh, wait, each one?
Oh, wait, each one.
Eight, each of you are a public agency.
Well, and we have to banish our reporter, so she's.
She's not a public.
She's definitely a public.
The, and the, the reason, um, uh, why this is important is it relates to the records that you create or receive as a public agency. The board is clearly, also, I can discount it, not, we have the board, and then we have each of you, including Cody, uh, as public agencies, because a public official is a public agency under the Freedom of Information law, so when a public official creates records related to his or her business, um, as a public official, then, uh, that record is, uh, is a public record. Uh, and, um, so I started the conversation with texts, and, um, as you, I mean, there's some embarrassing stories about texts, um, uh, where, uh, uh, one superintendent was, the, the situation was there was a guy who gave them like a million dollars, and, um, so superintendent is, and the guy's like giving, you know, this spiel, and, uh, superintendent, what a gas bag. I wish I had a short name. And the reporter said, are you texting? I'd like to see your text. And, and they were public records, and it was a big embarrassment, as you might imagine, but, um, the, there, there's an extra element here about texts to, to keep in mind, and, um, you're at a meeting, do your meetings ever go beyond the, uh, expected time?
Just a little bit.
Yeah, so, so you.
A little bit higher.
You text your significant other, you gotta pick up the milk, you know, I'm, I'm, or pick up my son, whatever, uh, is that a public record? If you do it at a board meeting, is that a public record? It is not, because it doesn't relate to the conduct of the public.
I can't send me lists of grievances while I'm at a board meeting, I'm like, I'm sorry, I can't.
And those are not, those are not public records, because they don't relate to the conduct of the public's business. Yes, Joe?
I have a question, once again, we'll look back at it a little bit, if you can be so kind as to humor me with that. You had mentioned that violation of the Freedom of Information Act.
Yes.
If you violate the Freedom of Information Act, do the B and E police come to your house with a search, educational search warrant or something, what happens when you breach the act?
Uh, when there's a complaint filed with the Freedom of Information Commission, uh, it, uh, uh, will schedule a hearing, and then.
Who schedules the hearing?
The Freedom of Information Commission.
Commission, okay.
And so you're, you're, uh, uh, depending on who the public agency is in.
Right.
In question, then, uh, you, um, are, are, go before the Freedom of Information Commission and give your side of the story, and then they decide whether it was or is not a violation. Um, there is an ombuds program, and, um, you know, I don't wanna overstate this, there are people in totally good faith can be found to have violated the Freedom of Information law, uh, and it happens a lot. If it's egregious, the commission is likely to order training, um, if it's particularly egregious, like, oh, those superintendent evaluations, I don't know what happened to them, uh, um, they got fined for that one.
Right.
Uh, so, so along the continuum, typically, it's, um, there was no violation, there was a violation, don't do it again, then in escalating terms, this public agency needs training, or ultimately, there's a possibility that there could be a fine.
So then, on an individual basis, you could be inconvenienced and have to go to some location, sit in front of some people to, uh, to actually hear your story and make a decision.
Yes.
The decision could cost you money, or could force you to go to some training unless you have further requirements.
Well, and you have to hire counsel, right, or no? Oh, no, are you, I don't think, any of my clients have gone to the commission and said counsel, but I guess that's, I would know that, and that.
I guess you.
Yeah, they, they don't tell me, but I can't imagine, frankly. Uh, yes, please.
So, um, back to the, the gas bag texts.
Yes.
Um, was the superintendent texting everyone on the board, or just one other individual?
He was texting, texting as a. Just wrong.
And because she's, so the, what is, just to put a finer point, what is discoverable or texts that are coming from any one of us during that meeting pertaining?
At any time.
At any time?
Right.
Okay, so it can be between one, one individual?
Two board members can text, um, on a Saturday.
Okay.
If it relates to board business, it's a public record.
Got it, okay. Now then, my other, my next question is, though, we're allowed to caucus without that being foible between our respective parties, correct?
Yes, I can elaborate on that. The caucus in terms of an individual discussion is outside of FOI, subject to the limitation, but number one, if, if the, oh, uh, I, you have a unique circumstance here where you have four.
No.
And four, uh, so, um, and what's a quorum of the board? So the caucus rules don't really apply, because you're, in caucus, you're not a quorum of the board, uh, so you don't have to worry about it. Uh, if you, uh, if a quorum of the board, uh, which is typical, some, one party or the other will have a majority, that will, their caucus will, uh, compose a quorum of the board, um, and that's perfectly appropriate, it's not FOI, but it's not a meeting, just like negotiations, not a meeting under FOI, but the commission, it is the Freedom of Information Commission, so they're very, it's in, you know, their whole perspective is public, uh, transparency of governmental operation, so they have ruled that if you're in a caucus with a quorum of the board and another party comes into the picture, then, um, you're no longer, it's no longer a meeting of members of the same political party who are members of the agency, so technically it no longer fits within the quorum.
You need somebody off the board, somewhere.
Or like the superintendent, or the Democratic town chairman.
Okay, just a non-board member.
A non-board member, right, but in your particular situation, I guess I've just given you an academic discussion, because your four people formed will never be a problem in FOI, so, but the, your records would be.
Before the clarification?
Say that again. Say that, okay.
Four Republicans meet, that's okay, four Democrat meet, that, that's okay, two Republicans, two Democrats meet, that's all.
That's okay, two, cause it's not a quorum. It, it, you, you need the five people communicating.
So as long as it's under five.
Correct.
Yeah, it doesn't matter what party you belong to, it's a, it's a.
Right, you're not, a quorum is not a separate.
You have no special authority as a, as a caucus.
Right.
Okay.
So here's the further, um, um, issue about texts. You're at a board meeting, someone from the audience texts you and says, don't mess this up, you're gonna have, you're gonna vote this the right way? What is that? Is that okay?
But if you don't respond, does it matter?
I think it matters.
Yeah, cause if you just receive one, as opposed to affirmatively saying something, right, you can't control what, what, what comes in.
And here, here's the, uh, the, it's an emerging area of law, so where we are right now, um, is, uh, that, you know, you can't help it, and I can't imagine the commissions, if someone texts you, it could be, you know, your child, so you're gonna read the text, you know, I don't see, but if you respond to that text, then I think it's a violation of the Freedom of Information law, and this is why. Uh, there was an interesting, uh, case, uh, there are all these interesting cases, this one was in Brookfield, uh, where it was the zoning board, and they were all up before the commission, accused of whispering during the meeting, and, uh, so they're, you know, I understand, I guess I was, uh, why were you whispering? Oh, I didn't want to hear. Not so hard, uh, and, uh, that was ruled to be, uh, uh, denial of access to the public meeting, because you have a right, as am I, with the public, to attend a meeting and hear what's going on, and so this, these whispers were denying the public the access to the meeting. Now, do you see where I'm going with the analogy? I haven't found a case on this yet, but texting during a meeting on board business, um, is like whispering, yeah, only you know about it, and so it's something to be cautious about.
But one-on-one, outside of a board meeting?
That's perfectly fine.
As long as you don't, and outside of a board meeting, as long as you don't have quorum as a part of the discussion.
Right.
Communications are not problematic.
Right, they're not problematic in the meeting sense, but sometimes the, the, uh, mechanism texting invites, uh, uh, informality, uh, and, uh, so you, you, so you do a text that give me a like for what a gas bag, uh, and, uh, that would be a public record. So, any other questions about?
Wait, so if it's in the meeting, it's foible?
No, it's foible no matter what, but if it's in the meeting, you run the risk of being accused of denying the public access to the meeting.
Leading all your numbers.
So, uh. So, ready for scenario three? You're, you're doing great so far, okay, the policy committee. Has been updating certain policies and deleting others. The policy on public comment, public, uh, received a lot of public attention because some members of the public are concerned that the board may eliminate the policy and deprive them of a form for complaining to the board, given the public attendance, some board members who are not on the policy committee want to attend the meeting of the policy committee, uh, at which the public complaint policy will be discussed. Is it a problem if the, a quorum of the full board attends a meeting at the policy committee?
They can attend, but they cannot, it's in any way different than the public, because otherwise then it's a meeting of the board.
It, it has the risk of morphing into a meeting of the board, and that's exactly correct, so we don't have to spend a lot of time on.
I'd like to do this for some.
I've had boards, so I say, well, what do you do? And they, come up, sit at the table.
Yeah.
And that, that is an invitation to an FOI violation, and interestingly, the Freedom of Information law expressly states that the attendance of a quorum of one public agency at a meeting properly posted by another public agency, like if you went, a quorum of this board went to the BET meeting, um, you don't have to post that, because you're attending a meeting properly posted, but you can't let it morph into a meeting of a board in the parking lot or otherwise.
By having discussion on board business.
Right, yeah, and, and, uh, but you, uh, Christina, you've correctly described the right approach, which is, board members are welcome to attend all the meetings, why, you know, you're not with the public, but you, you just have to see, I'm not on this committee, so my right to speak and be heard is the same as any other member of the party. This is, uh, just in passing, is the full board bound by the recommendation of the policy committee concerning the possible elimination or amendment to the public complaint policy? So, uh, the policy committee comes forward with the policy. Um, how much deference do board members owe, uh, to the, um, uh, decision of, of, of a board committee?
Zero.
Zero. Right, deference is a nice word, we could act like we care, but.
Well, that is the right answer, from my, my perspective, um, committees work on behalf of the board, but at the end of the day, you have to vote as you see fit. Um, so, uh, scenario four, a board member who's Facebook comes with a teacher. In, um, a post on his Facebook page, the teacher complains that his principal unfairly denied him three days of personal leave to attend nature's classroom in a neighboring school district to serve as a chaperone for his fifth grade son. The board member calls the principal to find out what the problem is. The teacher files a grievance, which is denied at the lower steps on the subway for the board. Can the board member? Can the board member whose Facebook friends with this guy participate in the grievance hearing, or does the board member have a conflict of interest preventing him from participating?
I'd say conflict, but that's just me. Whether it's a conflict or not, if it were me, I would step away.
How do you define a conflict?
Conflict of interest is, I mean, whether you're, if you're judge and jury, or whatever it is, like you're, and you're sitting as a member of the Board of Education, you're supposed to be making judgments based on policies and laws of the board, but if you have a friend, and you've already tried to step in on their behalf, you have asked questions as, in your role, on behalf of said friend, it puts you in a... Your question, make your judgment.
Well, let me ask a slightly different question, to just elaborate on this concept of a conflict. What if I have been... I've spent the last 10 years of working for youth athletics here in Greenwich. Now, I'm on the board, and the vote is to support some youth athletic initiatives that I've been arguing for, for the last five years. Do I have a conflict of interest if I, now I'm on the board, if now I pursue my interest in youth athletics and vote in favor of it?
No. I don't think they have an actual, but maybe a perceived.
I don't think you have a conflict at all, because you're elected for who you are, and what your life experience is, and if you're interested in youth athletics before you're on the board, and now you're on the board, you're still interested in youth athletics, or whatever the issue is. My definition of a conflict of interest is an affiliation or connection that interferes with your ability to exercise your public responsibilities, impartially based on the evidence and testimony. So, you have a conflict of interest if you're in an expulsion hearing, and it's your babysitter. You have to, you know, maybe you don't even like the babysitter, so you have to ask yourself, "Could I listen to the evidence and make a decision?" So, it's, now, the scenario is, it's not your babysitter, it's the boy who dumped your daughter. Is that a conflict? And, again, the financial stuff, people go to jail, you know, if they use their public position, but most of these conflict issues are truly just internal dialogue, as to, "Can I discharge my public responsibilities fairly without undue influence based on connections?" And, so, let's see. This may come under FOI, but I'll do it now. The question...
Can I ask a question about the conflict?
Oh, please.
Yeah, me too, I have one as well.
Actually, this past week, one of my... I was skiing with a friend who works for an ed tech company, he's like, "Oh, we have our, something going on with the Greenwich School District, like, could you help me get in touch with the superintendent or something?" And I was like, "Probably not," because that is kind of ignored it. But something like that, where you have outside friendships, business relationships, whatever, and nobody wants to, like, use their relationship with you to get access, or something along those lines, where how do you think, what's the framework to evaluate something like that?
I think the framework is to go back to the opening discussion, what is my role as a board member? And I'm a policymaker, and I'm possibly a judge. Your acquaintance is talking about an operational issue, and so, I would just refer that person to the superintendent. And I know people, just in the real world, want you to call the superintendent to, you know, make that introduction. And in that particular case, if you're not on the payroll, no one goes to jail. But I think that that does raise issues that many board members would prefer not to get involved with, and so, it would be best to just say, "I'm just a member of the board." We didn't just, this implicit, that you have no authority at all as a board member, except when you're collected as a board. So, when people want you to... And it comes up in the employment situation quite a bit. You know, my cousin's looking for a job in Greenwich, "What can you do for me?" And it's just, you have to make your own decisions, but I think the cleanest answer is, "Nothing, I can't do anything for you." There's a process, and the HR person is so-and-so, and the superintendent is Tony, and good luck to your cousin or whoever. Yes, please.
But like what Cody was saying, if somebody said, "Can you get me in touch with, you know, the superintendent?" I don't think there's anything incorrect in just saying, "Here's her contact information."
No, that's perfectly fine.
Or forward them, forward their information along, or somebody said, "You know, can you help me get a job in Greenwich?" And I say, "Well, this is the website that shows what jobs are available, you have to look there and apply through here." That's not incorrect, right?
That's perfectly correct.
As long as it's not me forwarding their resume to HR saying, "Ding, ding, 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 this person's a good hire."
I hope you give this person a good look.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, I direct people constantly to say this is a true...
And that's reasonable to do that.
Yeah, your comment, again, underscores how you, as board members, impart, have to educate the public. And they say, "Can you..." And some of us is disingenuous, because they do want to use a connection, but just helping them understand that's not your role, and here's the website or whatever.
Tom, what are the... What about, like, what if in your judgment, you're like, "Hey, full disclosure, this is my cousin, but I've always been very impressed by them, you should talk to them." You know, like, is that just in my area, where I have to use your best judgment, or is there something definitively incorrect about that?
I think that's a judgment call, but then, where I would balance that out, is that if you're advocating for a particular person, and it comes to the board, then you should recuse yourself, because you're not now exercising your duties as a public official impartially, but you're actually advocating for this person. So, I think if your cousin's applying, and you... Can a board member write a letter of recommendation for a position for the board?
Sure.
I think the answer is, sure.
That's a...
Sure, but if it ever comes to the board, now you've stepped out of your role as a neutral board member, and it would be advisable not to vote.
Be for a role for the board, that's elected.
Oh, actually, a couple of things. I explained, but you've told me that Tony hires everyone, so he's not gonna come to you for a vote, is that right?
Correct.
Correct.
So...
So, probably not, but...
Tom, mine relates to this question nicely, was basically, what if a member of the board decides that there is not a conflict, yet a different number of the board feels there is a conflict?
Yes.
How does one resolve that?
The... There's great deference to the voters. The voters put you in your positions, and you, by virtue of your election to the board, have the authority to exercise your responsibilities, which include voting on things. And if I say, "I don't have a conflict," and you say, "You do have a conflict," I move that Tom can't vote.
No, so it's vote.
No, you can't do that.
Can't do that.
That was the hypothetical. Correct. Now, I, a board member, or the board, cannot prevent an elected official from performing his or her responsibilities, because that's the deference that the courts give to the voters, though. And so, that's why most of this, other than the financial stuff, which, and I'm not an expert on financial crime, but most of this is truly an internal dialogue, and monologue, sorry. And part of that monologue has to be the appearance of conflict. In other words, you can assure yourself that your relationship or whatever does not impair your ability to make this decision on behalf of the public without undue influence. But there are circumstances where you're absolutely sure of that, but you realize that maybe the public isn't so sure. And so, part of this analysis internally is the appearance of conflict. And where, and no one's gonna say, "Hey, Joe, you know, this looks bad, you can't vote." But that has to be an individual decision, but I think board members are acting appropriately do, should consider the appearance of conflict. Well, ask that, oh, please.
What if I said, "Miss Chair and Vice Chair, I think we should be cleared for this."
That's an easy vote.
That's easy.
It's against the law, but it's an easy vote.
Well, it's not just for boards that are paid.
Just like you're getting stated today.
You can't be employed if you are in the board.
I just wanted it, because the teacher today, you know, in our civics class, pointed out that we were not paid.
There's a statute on that. It says, "If you are employed by the board on which you serve, your seat becomes vacant by operation of law." So, accepting compensation, you're right off the board.
No, I mean, as a whole, I'll just...
Right. You're saving your social fee, and I just want to clear the question.
Yeah.
You know, just in the context, just wanted to clarify the situation. Let's say you're the shareholder, you're a shareholder of a software company, and you think their software is great, and the, or like some kind of, you know, services business, and you think that they're good service. Are you, and you actually think the school would benefit, or the school system would benefit from adopting something like that or exploring it?
Yes.
Are you in the clear to recommend it, or are you doing it as long as you disclose that you're a shareholder?
Yes, and the further elaboration is, would that, or would that not come before the board for a vote? Because if you're a shareholder, you've advocated for it, then I think you've invited concern about your ability to discharge the public responsibilities.
But even just to tie that to the previous question, like, you made your sort of challenge, it's like, "Yeah, I have a financial, you know, full disclosure, I have a financial interest here, but you should evaluate it, and I'll recuse myself from above here, like a clean zone."
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, the recusal at the end is the only other piece that I would be... So, you've explained it perfectly, that's it. That works fine.
Cool.
So, the last thing, and this...
Do we have an investment coming our way?
Yeah. It's just, you know, like, do you see the Wall Street Journal piece on judges' conflicts with their stock portfolio, that like big exposé they did? It was kind of jarring, like, a lot of them had ruled on things that were in their 401Ks or other things like that. But I guess it's become a big deal in the judicial world the last six months.
I just have one more observation with regard to conflicts, and that is, here's the situation. The board in its judicial role deliberates secretly and fires a teacher that's presented for that consideration. And it turns out that one of the board members has a personal interest adverse to this teacher, and so, as a matter of due process, this board member's vote is a problem. So, this was a real case. And so, the school district defense was, no big deal. It was nine oh, throw that vote out, now it's eight oh, teacher still loses. Are you all good with that result?
No, because they could say that the board member that had a conflict could have undue influence the other votes.
Exactly right. And that illustrates the deliberative process. You make your decisions through a deliberative process, and so, that means listening to each other. And the court looked at that situation in that deliberation, they couldn't tell. It might have been, you know, six to three in favor of the teacher, until this one board member eloquently explained why the teacher should be fired. So, any conflict in a deliberative process is a problem. So, sometimes this happens. There's a conflict, and so, it comes before the board, and the board member grandly says, you know, "I have a conflict, I'm accusing myself, and I just want you to know." And then they proceed to explain why this is a good idea. And that's an exercise of the conflict, because you have... The vote is not the only thing involved, it's the discussion that is part of the decision-making process. So, when is it appropriate for a board member to call a principal to find out what the problem is after reading the teacher's complaint?
Never, it goes never, yeah.
Okay, let's move on. That's correct.
Because we don't, we don't get involved in personnel matters, that's the rule.
Is that the answer?
It is the answer.
Right, but it's because we don't get involved in personnel matters.
Right, it's the role of the superintendent.
It is, it is. And just on a practical level, now, you know, sometimes we get into the discussion, some members of Board of Education have children in the system, and they're gonna be talking to the principal, or talking to the teacher, perfectly fine. Although, I think, board members are and should be sensitive to the fact that, when you walk into a building, there's like, in the banks, you know, there's this little buzzer under the secretary's desk, so, "Board member here, board member here." So, you know, you need to be sensitive to the fact that there could be an overreaction, because you're just there to talk about your kids. So, sometimes, it's good to just reassure and say, "I'm here as a parent, and I just..." But it's very important that you retain that right as a parent. But otherwise, the appropriate protocol, when you, other than specific delegations, which I'll explain, but you go through the superintendent if you need information, you go through the superintendent, and you don't reach out directly. The delegation that sometimes exists is members of certain policies, it may be that the policy, members of certain committees, that the finance committee would have direct, the chair would talk directly without always going through the superintendent, I don't know if that's true. But it's only in those unique circumstances of delegation like the chair, there may be an assistant superintendent who's the liaison to the policy committee. And so, you know, those would be, but those would be clearly understood circumstances. The general rule is that board members have no special authority and should not be reaching out to staff members.
But can I ask a question about that?
Please.
If you're exercising your duty in terms of evaluating the superintendent, which is one of our jobs, can part of that be discussions with their support desk for them? How do you think about that question? And the second question would be, doesn't every member of the public have the right to reach out to any of these people? Whether they get a response or not is a different matter, but how do you separate your rights as just a member of society versus what restrictions that may exist for a board member?
Well, taking your first question first, the statute on superintendent evaluation states that the evaluation should be conducted in accordance with guidelines and criteria mutually agreed between the superintendent and the board. And it could be that, in a particular situation, through discussion, what might be called a 360 evaluation, I've heard that term, I'm not an expert on it, but where you get perspectives, you know, from everyone, if that's the evaluation process worked out, then there would be a mechanism for getting that feedback as part of the evaluation process. But other than that, I think there, I don't want to overstate the legal issue, it would be inconsistent with the statute, I think. But the practical issues there, board members, boards make decisions on information, everyone should have the same information. As I'm walking down this road, you know, I am a little concerned that I don't want to come across as overly formalistic, because people talk, and they have conversations. And someone in the supermarket, or a teacher could say, "You know, my principal's picking on me." And you just have to take it with a grain of salt, but to reach out affirmatively as a board member, to seek evaluative information about the superintendent, I think is problematic, because it would be inconsistent with the agreed-upon process for evaluation.
But what if they agree upon, is that a contractual issue in a superintendent's contract that's predefined? It doesn't sound like it's statutory.
The statute...
There's a set way of evaluation.
I think we're saying the same thing. The statute says, "The evaluation shall be conducted in accordance with guidelines and criteria mutually agreed." What those are, is a discussion between the board and the superintendent, and to the extent that there's a 360 aspect to that evaluation, would be part of that discussion.
Could the board, in theory, say, when they're... Could the board in theory say when they're like if you advise like a superintendent and say, the condition of your being hired is that you have to mutually agree that we have no limitation to our ability to evaluate you?
If you're looking to get the best candidate, that's probably not the most effective strategy, but yes, theoretically.
I'd actually argue the opposite, the best candidate's fear of the least, fear of something like the least, but that's good to know.
Okay, well, and we could differ on defining something.
Yeah, it's traceable information, good executives go through that.
Yeah, okay. So.
Look at that one, it's definitely clear.
What, so just a question unrelated to that. So say I'm a board member and I'm going into a meeting with my kid's school. Am I supposed to say, like I just operate on the assumption that nobody knows who I am because, you know, they have lives and.
Well, that's probably a little modest, but go ahead.
I mean, most people generally.
They have lives or that she's, that they don't know who she is.
Right, they have lives and they don't come, maybe they don't come to so many board meetings. So, you know, am I supposed to say, I'm not, you know, I'm just here as a parent, like what?
The context will make it obvious that you're just there as a parent and I don't want to like protest too much. Oh, I'm just, you know.
Not that anyone's a role out of the back.
Where the issue would come up is if you're meeting in your role as a parent. And then you say, by the way, how things going? What do you think of the principal? And what do you buy this curriculum? Is this, and so now you've stepped outside of that role as a parent. Although, you know, even when I mentioned curriculum, I know these are kind of blurry lines. But if you're dealing with your child and you're concerned about the education, whatever you want to talk about is fine. I don't think you have to like give them a sort of a regular warning, right? Right. But I would be surprised if any person you meet with wouldn't be aware that you're a board member.
It's good for ratings.
But so I understand what you're saying in regards to something like the evaluation of the superintendent because that is where we have the opportunity to extend or end a contract. But isn't it our responsibility as an elected official to gather input from members of the community? You know, when there's something up for discussion, if they're, for instance, you know, we have a new.
Math curriculum.
Math curriculum or no, whatever. We have a new program in one of the schools to teach kids how to.
Do cartoons.
Do cartoons, or I was going to say like green dogs, whatever. And, you know, we know what's coming up and we could reach out to people, say, you know, the pilot's going, how do you think the pilot's going? You know, are kids interested in this? Like what's your opinion as an educator, you know, out of curiosity or as a parent? Like what's your interest, you know? Isn't it that our responsibility to gather input from members of the community? Like represent them? I don't mean when it's in something where you're talking about a contract or hiring or firing. It's a completely different avenue, but before we vote on something like, let's say fields, right?
May I go over the perspective? The perspective before you, upon your experience? I would think that the eight of us have one employee and basically we, on a continuous basis, should be evaluating that employee in the regular passing time. So to have to reach out for further evaluation from the eight of us together?
No, 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 I'm saying not for that context. She's going to other issues, not that. She was saying, for instance, when the discussion comes up constantly, you know, fields or school facilities or whatever it is, right? We're talking about. And my question is, is do you reach out to people who live in that community, in that neighborhood? How would you feel about this being this way or this being this way? I'd like to hear from members of the community, I'd like to hear your input.
Right.
Isn't that our responsibility? Not all contracts stuff, just any given other subject.
You as a board member are representing your community and you want to hear from your community. You make an excellent point. You don't want to say, oh, you know, I can't talk to you about that. It's just a matter of degree. But if you're just in the normal course, you're a member of the board, you're interested in what people think, not only appropriate, but I think you're saying it's your responsibility.
That's what I'm asking, I'm saying when it's not a hiring or firing or contract decision.
But here, so that, I agree with you. But you're, what I just want to caution is that there are some board members who we could also not say, well, that's nuts. You know, because they're engaging in an investigation and they're calling people in to talk to them. You know, it's a matter of degree, but what you've described is perfectly appropriate. And you just would, I just wouldn't want to suggest that any board member examination of any issue is fine because you're an ear to the community. But in the normal course to talk about issues of education and grants and hear from the community, that's expected and perfectly appropriate.
Right, I was gonna say like go in and conduct a survey, but I think if you're going around talking to people at parties or seeing people around town, I think that's important, right?
No, that's what I'm asking, because I just wanted to delineate the difference between reaching out to staff members to ask about, you know, we were just talking about superintendent, right? We're bringing in a contract, that's one, like that's a contractual discussion, hiring and firing. I was talking, the difference was before we had a vote on something that's coming up. We go, it's there, what, you know, what are your thoughts? It's not necessarily to sway, it's just that we want input, not everybody shows up and needs to talk. I'm just, that's what I was asking. So there's a very big difference between.
That's good point.
I want to go back to what you were talking.
One second, we're gonna start talking.
I just want to go back to what you're saying about communications to staff. And like, everyone should have the same information. I mean, so I think there's a danger with eight of us asking questions of the staff, right? We're all sending our emails to them and it becomes a burden. So I don't know if you have some rules, guidelines, guidance about communications from individual board members to the staff? Just, I mean, that would be helpful to us.
It would typically not be to the staff, but rather you would, your information request would go to the superintendent. And the superintendent would get the information. You've raised a really important point, and sometimes I have a scenario on this in terms of, but I think all districts should have a communication protocol. And the goal of that protocol should be that everyone has the same information so that you can all participate in the same manner in that deliberative process. Now, as a lawyer, I get, you know, sometimes people try to play me. Five o'clock before a board meeting, I'll get the ring ring and I'll answer the phone. And I just know I'm being set up because they asked me some loaded questions. And I have to dance because I'm in the service business, you know, I can't just like tell somebody to bug off. But I can't like answer their question like that because how you ask a question affects the answer. If you say, how do I do this versus I can't do this, kind of, or what are the problems? I mean, so you're going to get a different answer. So the communication protocol should be if you have a request for information, you should address it to the superintendent. On some occasions, these requests become burdensome. And then there has to be an intervention by the board chair to try. I wrote a column years ago called Working for Nine Bosses, in this case with V8. But, you know, you can't just, everyone can't have just open season on the superintendent. If there has to be a reasonable, because actually Tony has a full-time job already running the district. But then the rest of the protocol is that when the question is asked, the information is obtained, then that information goes to all the members of the board so that everyone has the same information and is able to participate.
But how do you achieve that without creating a meeting, right?
This is, my understanding is the way it usually works, and I would be much in favor of it working again. So for example, let's say, I'll use my recent example with Dr. Stacy. I had a truckload of questions for her. I, what I should have done is I should have written Dr. Stacy, Dr. Jones, and then CC'd all of you. So you see all of my questions. These are all the things that I, this is what I'm thinking about, so I would like to have answers. And then either Dr. Stacy or Dr. Jones responds back just to me. Here are my answers, or here's, and here's your response. And then I flip it to you guys saying FYI, right? That's not creating a meeting, it's giving you, it's giving you the answers to the questions that I got. But this way, one, you know, it serves two purposes, right? One, it gives you my thoughts and where I'm thinking about without actually having to do more conversation than we all have time for. But it also helps Dr. Jones in the sense that Karen Hirsch and I are not asking the same questions, right? Because Karen, Dr. Jones, they just got the same damn question, sorry.
Right, so this is something, I think we can really improve.
We can improve more if we all stick to this, to, this is the protocol. When we're talking to Dr. Jones, we want information, we will CC all of us. And then Dr. Jones will respond to the one of us and we will disseminate that information. This way we all know what's coming.
Well, I think that's why Tom was suggesting that it should be a communication protocol. No, but that's the kind of example, that's the way to.
Is that the policy or is that just because on the protocol?
No, I think I would make it.
I would make it a policy, I think if we're all, if we're all good citizens of the board, we would just say, this is our practice, this is how we're going to share information with each other.
Or the budget system, we kind of do it on the Google app, right? So it achieves the same thing.
But that's only on that one issue.
It's only that one issue, but it's a good example, you could do it this way, so you're probably more efficient, right?
More efficient because we have, because this way, you know, we have questions about topics that come up at every meet, right? And we're all, in order to create the efficiency of a meeting, we should work, strive hard to get questions in advance. I know it's really difficult, but in advance, or at least you all have everybody's thinking when we're going into a meeting. So we're not wasting time and we can get one side of questions back. But yes, you're right, we do do it in the sense for the budget, but we can implement that just in email for purposes of our regular board meetings.
Now, do we then need to post that?
What's that?
We don't need to post that, all that information, not train.
Well, you can't.
You can't, right?
You can't post it because the posting invites the public to observe your discussion.
Right.
So you just have to.
But it's not only a discussion, it's informing each other of answers to questions.
I think that's the danger though, when you include the full board, is that people do respond. And that's why when I do my projects, I always say, please, do not respond to all of them.
We can say, do not respond, and we just have to.
We have to train ourselves.
We have to train ourselves, so this is how we're going to do it. Because I'm sure the same thing happens with Sean with questions, when we'll have multiple things and he's like, I didn't answer this question yet thirteen times.
Right.
Right? So.
Different ways.
In different ways, time.
It's weird with numbers that you can get different answers, Sean.
But I, but I do think that that would be a worthy protocol to just put in practice and say, yeah, we all agree, so right. And I'm happy to start trying.
And I would say, I would prefer you not email send yourself. And I say that because a lot of times you don't know what's on their plate. So that's a prime example because you guys sometimes send questions like really close to the meeting time or, and would somebody get something in their inbox and if it is like fifteen or twenty questions, you know. So it's helpful for me if I get something and there's four meetings in three hours where I can respond instead of war on them.
How about if we, if we, in our communication protocol, we make a rule for ourselves that we have to do it within, I don't know, a certain forty-eight hour or something?
I would say.
A goal.
And it, and it.
It's just a goal.
We say it's absolutely good to set a goal, but, you know, life sometimes gets.
We do our best, yeah.
And this is, this is an unpaid extracurricular activity that we all signed up for. Granted, we all put our hands in the air, but somehow, and I'll be the first to admit, like, life does not always follow my side. So, you know, it just gets in the way and I will get delayed.
Well, I was gonna say, I know, I know that sometimes in a morning before meeting, after I've read the documents and I had a couple of questions that I'll email, when I email them to Dr. Jones, I'll say, I'm aware it's very late and I knew you probably don't want a ton of response leads, but I'm just going to put these out there for, you know, at some, you know.
I have a suggestion. We could do this offline or we're not paying time, billable hours.
I would, I was just going to congratulate you on this is why I'm here, to promote this discussion.
Right.
But it doesn't have to.
And you're being this way of response, but you know.
Right. Cody, did you have a question?
I did, but I think it was mostly Chris.
Okay, got it, all right.
Okay, scenario five, and then we'll just jump to the FY thing. Scenario five, as a board member, you hear a lot from parents and others in the community. A parent who has been a reliable source in the past, and he tells you that a teacher at Western Middle School was reported to have been using sexual innuendo in class. You check with the superintendent, who tells you she's dealt with the situation. A week later, the parent contacts you again and says, this teacher is still teaching, expressing concern that the teacher may still be saying inappropriate things in class. How do you reconcile this conflicting information? Should you investigate on your own?
You refer it back to the superintendent, right? Same way as the first time, yeah?
Number one, it may, isn't necessarily conflicting information. The public thinks that if there's a problem, then the next thing is somebody is dragged out and fired. Quite often, we resolve problems in a less severe way. So the fact that this person was still there is of no consequence, but I think you all know you don't want to investigate on your own. But this issue raises two things. First, when people come to you as board members, this is where in all instances, they figure, well, you're on the board, you're a big deal. And help me with my problem. And it's often your personal impulse because you're spending all these hours in human access and unpaid extracurricular activity. Spending all this time serving your community. So you come to this service with a service mentality. So your first impulse is, well, how can I help? And the way to help, without getting into this operational piece, is to help the person understand the chain of command. Your role as a board is not part of that chain of command unless and until it gets up into a policy level or complaint before the board. Did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal? Did you talk to the assistant superintendent? And that's the way you help the public understand how they can get their problems solved. But it's hard because you do want to help. And now the last question is how detailed should the information from the superintendent be? And how often should she report that to you?
There should be no detailed information, other than a general outline of, like, what, I think you may have answered earlier. I'm aware of the situation, I'm addressing it. I'm not sure we need to know more than that, I don't know.
Well, you don't need to know more than that, but, you know, it's hard to just say, oh, and I.
Well, it's hard because you have members of the public sometimes.
True, following up with you.
Or sitting in one of our meetings in their three minutes talking about.
Yes.
I was also gonna say, I think the other piece of this is, is not necessarily a scenario, but it is some sort of scenario. You've had things where it was not even sitting with the superintendent, it becomes a police matter. And then even the superintendent has the information because it goes to the police. And then we are not even participatory, not we, but we as an entity. And so she doesn't even have that information, it's, the police aren't going to give it either way. So that's a whole other layer if there's some.
Well, you say that, to your point, I mean, I'm curious, the public is often curious. When we have an incident that happens and somebody asks you, you're led to what happened to those second grade teachers that showed inappropriate video? Whatever happened to them? Why did it happen to them? I don't know what came of it, then only online by. What do I say to a member of the public who comes up to me and says, Joe, by the way, what ever happened to those teachers? And what was their discipline, what was their punishment? Are they still teaching? And it sort of doesn't get back to us? Should it get back to us? You're saying it does it, it should not get back to us? But should we get reports on what discipline is taking place? Is that something that is something we do or is that something policy?
You shouldn't. The superintendent wouldn't have a responsibility to update you on all these personnel issues. Matters of significance to debrief how a particular situation was handled, that's appropriate. You do have an oversight role. And so if the matter is resolved and it's of a significance to, because you have a lot of stuff on your plate, but if it's of a significance to warrant it. but if it's of the significance to warrant it, you can ask the superintendent for a debrief. And often that would be considered a personal matter to be discussed in executive session as long as the individual doesn't require it to be held in public. I don't want to overstate the case, but I don't want to say, no, no, that's.
Not as appropriate, you're saying you have to have major issues.
Yeah, exactly, because that is consistent with your oversight role. And Karen, this last hypothetical, I also just think it echoes something you said earlier about being an ear to the community, you know? The people are gonna be talking to you about these different things. And one of the questions that comes up, you gotta get complaints as board members. How often should you share that complaint with the superintendent? The answer is, there's no answer to that. You have to exercise your judgment. But the superintendent benefits from your bringing matters to the superintendent's attention. And that's that important role that you have as representatives of the community. So you bring those issues forward. And there are the rare circumstances where a debrief afterwards would be appropriate. This is why, I think I started by saying that line between operational and policy is not always crystal clear. Because on the one hand, it's real clear. Operational issues, Tony is the chief executive officer. But you do have an oversight role. And sometimes these issues would come up. You know, the old saying, there ought to be a law? Sometimes these issues come up. Well, I'll just use a simple example. There's concern about teachers not returning homework in a timely way. Now, I'm not saying you should regulate that by policy, but that's the kind of issue that might come up and say, you know, should we provide guidance in terms of the operation of this or policy on that issue or some other issue? So as representatives of the community, you're gonna hear things from people. And not only do you want to be sure that they're being handled, but at some point, the repetition of these concerns may rise to the level of a policy consideration. So those are the scenarios. The last one about sitting in an administrative interview. I'll defer to your judgment. I think you all passed this test excellently. The question is, how interested are you in the Freedom of Information Law? Because I have seven questions that I could ask you before we could call.
I think I would be interested in hearing a little bit more.
Just because they were that way.
I know.
Good.
Well, it's time and energy to do this.
Oh, absolutely.
Or take the best ones.
Yeah.
Maybe even go for greatest hits.
The top three, yeah.
Top three?
Yeah, I think it's a good.
Okay, we'll give you a moment.
Because we also get to keep these, right? So we can do this and whatever.
Although, what you'll see is that we've, and typically I do this for colleagues, and they'll argue one answer and then they'll argue the other answer when you decide it's right.
So some of the answers are Bob Bond asked and. Hopefully, they discuss this stuff.
Okay, question two. I just learned that several members of the board had met to review the resumes of candidates for director of maintenance. In fact, shortly after the board announced that Rocky Balboa was selected and would be the new director, I happen to know Mr. Balboa is a horrible choice for the position. And I immediately filed an FOI request for all of the resumes the board reviewed, so I can show that the board had far better candidates to choose from. But what I got back was so decked that I couldn't tell who else had applied, hell. So option one is, the board doesn't have to identify the identity of other candidates for the director position without their consent. Option two, this is public information. And as you probably know, under the Freedom of Information Law, personnel information is public information unless, one, there's no public interest and, two, its release would be highly offensive to a reasonable person. And so here we have a circumstance where wouldn't you want to know who else applied? Wouldn't the public have a right to know who else applied so that they could second guess you on the judgment? So do you vote in favor of option one or option two?
Option one.
Option one? So you're saying, notwithstanding the public interest in knowing who you.
Because we also have a right to protect those candidates that didn't get selected. Should they have a current job? And if their boss finds out that they were looking elsewhere, that they could get fired because we've revealed that they were looking here? Don't we have that right? Don't they have, doesn't another candidate have that right? To not have their name and their resume and their personal information revealed?
So do you all agree that option one is the right answer?
Except for that part about being too harsh on Rocky.
Okay, that was.
Well, not that, but I just meant, I don't, I think in HR is a very different.
Well, it's interesting. The Perkins test does, teacher evaluations are confidential by statute. Other personnel actions are not confidential by statute. For example, if someone gets a reprimand and someone FOIs it, they're entitled to that information. But your point is well taken. There's a special exception under the Freedom of Information Law for applicants for employment. And we do have the right, and one could argue responsibility, to maintain confidentiality of applicants for employment because you could impair your ability to attract good candidates if they cannot apply in a confidential way. And interestingly, the statute on executive session expressly says that the minutes of a meeting should include the names of all persons attending executive session except for persons attending for purposes of a job review. So it's expressly baked into FOI that option one is correct.
Maybe I should ask that.
Question three. The board had included on last week's meeting agenda discussion and possible action concerning employee resignation or termination. I was intrigued. I was looking forward to what I would be a juicy discussion. When the board came to this matter on the agenda, however, a member moved to go into executive session for that purpose. The agenda did not mention executive session, but they held one anyway. I should file a complaint, right? It wasn't on the agenda. Option one is, the person has an unhealthy interest in this fortune and no basis for a complaint. Option two is that the person is right because the executive session was not on the agenda. And the agenda is required to apprise the public of the business to be transacted. So can the board go into executive session without executive session being on the agenda?
I say yes.
It's not a special meeting that holds two thirds vote to change the agenda?
Well, then you're saying it needs to be on the agenda.
But you added it to the agenda by making two thirds vote.
Well, you did it in a regular meeting. So is it then, you're saying that a special meeting, you better have it on executive session on the agenda or you can't go into executive session?
That's my understanding.
I think you can.
He's making it skeptical. You don't even look like you're skeptical.
No, I am just pleased that, you know, after all these two hours, I have some information to share with you that will be helpful. Executive session is a procedural status. It's not an agenda item. The question is always whether you have an item on your agenda that is privileged to executive session. And in fact, you can well understand that you're talking about a policy. And it comes up, and, oh, well, actually, we heard from our lawyer. You raised a question, well, our lawyer opined on that. It's not on the agenda. What's on the agenda is discussion of a policy. If the lawyer has provided written communication, and that's a document confidential under the Freedom of Information Law. And so you can say, we want to go into executive session to discuss that privileged document, even though it's not on the agenda. In fact, whenever I have an opportunity to help a district write an agenda where it says executive session, I say, you can't say that. Or it's best not to say that, because you don't know if you're gonna have an executive session until the board votes by two thirds vote stating the reason for the executive session. So whenever I, you know, you would want to typically group your executive session items. And then executive item one proposed for executive session, and like that. But I've had reporters confront me and say, it's not on the agenda, this is a violation. And I just wanted to share with you that that is not the case.
And there are only, sorry, there are really only two items you can load an executive session for, to be clear.
Five.
Five. To me, there were two, so there are three. I thought it was personnel and litigation.
No.
Security.
The five items are pending claims and litigation, discussion concerning the personnel matters. And in that regard, there's an expectation that we say more than personnel matters. But the statute talks about appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Those are personnel matters. That's all privileged to executive session. The deployment of security personnel or devices. That's number three. The acquisition of real estate.
Interesting.
Well, because it could screw up.
We're never gonna have that one.
Yeah, because it could, we did, actually, when we were renting the lease.
Oh, that's true.
Could not discuss it.
Until all proceedings related to the acquisition are concluded. Because as you point out, the public policy concern is that if a public agency is talking, we really need to get that, that's not a good bargaining position. And then the last one is the potpourri. Reason five for executive session is any, a discussion of any matter that would result in the disclosure of information containing confidential documents. That's the attorney client privilege. It's FERFA if you have an expulsion hearing. You're in executive session under reason five. And there are actually, the list is 26 items long on what our security, like, security plans are exempt. Test questions, you know, a parent could FOI at the task, you know, it must be nice. So there's these items like that. And actually, the last scenario I won't go through, but it has to do, and it's gonna be Sean's opportunity to say, we board members always get in my face. They think they have a better idea. I should just be able to buy things and tell them about it. And the question is, as you know, under FOI, negotiation is outside of, you don't have to negotiate public. The question is, does that negotiation relate solely to collective bargaining? Or is it negotiation of the bus contract?
Let's see.
Well. The, but there's more to the story. The negotiation piece in the Freedom of Information Law expressly relates to strategy negotiations with respect to collective bargaining. But there's item 24, I think, on this list. Is responses to requests for proposals until all the transactions been concluded. Those are confidential documents. When you put out for bid for a bus contract, for example, those are confidential and the board can discuss those bids until the transaction's completed. So there's a way to negotiate business contracts without doing it public, which of course would be disadvantageous if you had to negotiate public. Yes?
Speaking of bus contracts. You know, ours was, we spoke about it in public. Our bus contract came in higher than we had expected. The BET has complained about that occurrence. But perhaps they don't know a lot of the backstory of how we got to this situation? Or is that, or what is the delineation of what would be violating executive session? If they were like, don't you know how hard this was? Or whatever, you know? What if?
You raise a good question, because there is this important responsibility to preserve the confidentiality of discussions held in executive session. But the fact that something's discussed in executive session doesn't mean it can't be independently discussed outside of executive session. So at a certain point, at a public meeting, the board could say, you know, questions have been raised about the cost of the transportation contract. Could you please explain that? And then now it's out in the public, so.
But then can they ask for any of the discussions that have happened during the executive session? If once you're interested in.
The board, no, the privilege is in the moment, you know, you're discussing. And it's really important as a matter of policy and practice to respect that difference, so that people, just imagine how, and there are rogue, every so often, there's a rogue board member who says, you know, and that just interferes with the ability of the board to do its business. These executive session privileges are thoughtfully added to the statute so that in certain limited circumstances, the board can do what people normally do, which is negotiate privately. So you need to be respectful of the executive session privilege, but you can always raise the issue, well, we need to share with the public some of these issues. And then that's a board decision and then that discussion can be held in public. And it's not like, well, what we talked about is, but rather, here's the problem and here's the information. Yes?
Tom, I've got a final question for you.
Okay.
Could you list a comprehensive list of all the perks that we get for being a board member?
It's a short list. We were talking briefly before about how it's illegal to get paid.
Okay. Another perk?
The unending gratitude of your community, yes. The thank you notes that you all get regularly.
Personal satisfaction for a job well done.
I was wondering whether we had a special secret list that we.
We are given the privilege of giving our children their requests.
Oh, between us, I don't. I have a secret.
Well, I, thank you. It was, I really appreciate, even when you went off and started talking about your protocols. That was great, that was wonderful.
No, but this is a discussion we had, and that, of course, it was very helpful and productive, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I don't have the agenda in front of me, but since we did do it differently this time, now we're like, take a motion to adjourn, and then we are going.
It would be.
Can I ask one more question, Natalie?
Yeah, sorry.
Are we able to access Tom on an individual basis if we have questions in the future?
He's expensive.
Yes.
I would say cost effective, but the typical, that's a protocol question, and it is typical for board members to raise legal questions to either the chair or the superintendent and not to have individual board members contacting the lawyer. Because when I get a request for legal advice, then I answer it the board and everyone gets the same answer.
Well, we can, I mean, I certainly, I think this was very helpful, this session. And like I was saying to you guys in a prior email or two, this is something that we used to do more often. Pre-COVID, we used to go up to see you at the conference. But then there was a time when we actually did ongoing professional development. And we did, ran lots of scenarios like this. And we always did it here at Amire, and that felt really helpful. So I'm happy to, you know, to discuss this with all of you. But if you think this is something of interest, then we should probably try to find time to do this again and run different plays and different scenarios.
Well, after two and a half years of serving on the board, I've let him find out now what I can't and can't do.
Never too late.
That's never late.
So you're not giving us your cell phone and personal email?
So since I'm learning here, and since you did, you had our agenda done differently today, which was smart, because we always did notice our executive session differently.
Yes.
So now we're going to the next item.
The next item is a discussion concerning legal obligations. And Title IX is reflected in the legal advisement, and that would be privileged to executive session.
So if we don't adjourn, we just go into executive session?
Right. Check out the report.
Aaron, Aaron, it's the lead of the camera.
But then, don't we have to invite if you want? Dr. Jones, you stay here, she has to be formally invited into these.